Okay, welcome to the special meeting at 6:00 for May 14th. And we're going to discuss the Recreation Center Somatic Design Study. Kind of roll call, please.
Three council members are present. Councilmember Oliva is excused and councilmember Papin is running a few minutes late.
It's our famous Bay Area traffic, so, thank you. All right, so we have a report from staff, thank you, from our deputy city manager.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we're doing that next session, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to present Andrea from Group 4 Consulting, who will guide you through this process. Later on this evening, you'll be approving the, you'll be hearing the conceptual designer, or hopefully approving the conceptual design report. The next phase is schematic design, and we'll be having two sessions like this to look at some of the project components in a little bit more detail. So Andrea will lead you through that process and happy to take any questions as we go through it.
Welcome Andrea.
Thank you, it's good to be back. Excuse my voice, I'm just getting over a sore throat. So tonight, a quick agenda for tonight, review the project work plan. As Deanna mentioned, we are in the schematic design phase, and so we're going to do a quick recap of the conceptual design recommendation, which the council approved when I was last here. An update on the floor plan, we have options for an exterior material palette that we'd love to get input from the council tonight, and then review the site plan and some of the other landscape features as part of the schematic design, and then recap with next steps. So we're currently past the conceptual design, you'll be reviewing and hopefully approving that report, but we are progressing forward, moving through schematic design and ongoing, working simultaneously through various funding and implementation strategies. And the schematic design should, phase should last approximately four to five months. The council previously provided direction on the design option for the park lantern design, and so that is what we'll be reviewing and working through this evening. So you can see the renderings per this conceptual design report up on the screen here. And just a quick recap of the building program, just to remember, we have of course an entry lobby, community lounge, a dedicated senior lounge, two classrooms, two preschool classrooms, a community room that is divisible and can seat up to 300 to 500 seats, a commercial kitchen that supports the community room events, a fitness studio, game room, a dedicated art room, various conference rooms, vending and refreshments, and of course, staff and support to run and operate the facility. And we're looking at roughly 25,900 square foot facility that is two stories. Up on the screen here is the first floor, and so the main entrance as you come in is the lobby and lounge with the reception that's immediately in front of all of the building support and staff workroom, and an adjacent conference room that can be shared both by staff and the public. Just directly off the lobby and the lounge is the game room, and adjacent to that is the fitness and wellness studio. Across the hall from that is our preschool classroom suite, so there's two classrooms there with an office, rest area, and associated prep storage and restrooms for the preschool program. And then at the end of the gallery is our large community room that is illustrated here divisible by three, and it's supported by various storage rooms, kitchen alcoves, and a commercial catering kitchen. And then I highlighted in gray are the other building supports such as electrical rooms, mechanical rooms, various restrooms for men's, women's, as well as family. An additional park restrooms to support the park, and an additional after our entrance for programs and events that are happening in the community room when the rest of the community center might be closed. Up on the second floor, as you ascend either via elevator or stair, is another conference room, the art classroom, the dedicated senior lounge, and accompanying kitchenette, a larger, more boardroom style conference room. And then at the end of the gallery are two classrooms that are again divisible, so it could be one large classroom or two smaller classrooms, and its associated support spaces, including restrooms and building support. And of course, an outdoor deck that faces the paseo. As you recall, we are really thinking about how the library is going to run on day-to-day operations, so we have those high activity levels located on the first floor, which include the lobby, the teen and game room, fitness and wellness studio, the preschool classrooms, and the community room, and wanted to be sensitive that we understand those are, that's going to be a very active floor, and then that we see more moderate activity up on the second floor, so a little quieter up there with the senior lounge, conference rooms, the arts and classrooms, and the two shared classrooms. And so really thinking about the acoustics and making sure we're zoning the recreation facility appropriately for the various users that will be there. And again, just to highlight some of the amenities up on the second floor, a number of great views out of all of these rooms, and especially when we think about the arts and crafts classroom, having the capability of having nice northern light to support painting and other fine art programs. And then as always, as was required, there will be access via an elevator to the second floor, as well as areas within the stairs and space for refuge in case of emergencies or other means of evacuation. So we're going to jump quickly in, if there's no questions, into the exterior material, different options. That's really where we would like to get the most feedback from you guys, from the council this evening. And so we have three options to share with you. And so here we're illustrating the various materials and where they'll be placed. This is just a single front elevation as you come into the parking lot, this is that main elevation as you enter in the facility. And so you can see there are a variety of different materials being used. We have glass with their metal molins, a wood look soffit on the underside of the roof, accent stone in that vertical orange area, and then two colors of what we're calling EFS, which is just an exterior insulated finish system, which basically is what would look like stucco, if you were to think of it like that. And so there are two different colors there to help break up the massing and provide variety of finishes and colors throughout the building. And so the first option that we have here is, I'm going to have Deanna pass out the samples, so you can see them in person illustrated here. So we're looking at a variety of different stones, and the first stone that we wanted to look at was, this is a locally sourced stone within 500 mile radius, it comes out of Las Vegas. It is a natural stone that is mined and curried out of that Vegas area. And the stone comes in a variety of heights and lengths, anywhere from two inches to four inches up to six inches, and the maximum length is 24 inches and the minimum length is six inches, so you can get a variety of heights and lengths within this material. And one of the things that we heard was that there was a desire to complement the brick, but without using brick, find a stone that might work well with the existing brick that in the other civic facilities. And so this was a stone that's not only locally sourced, but we think works well with the brick here at the city hall, as well as the library. So it picks up the red tones, a little bit of the orange and cream tones, and really complements those different materials within the civic campus. And then we're balancing that, or contrasting that with two tones of EFS, a lighter color EFS on the main two-story volumes, and then a slightly darker EFS color in a nice warm gray on the lower level here, and then again, picking up the wood tones on the soffit on the underside of the roof. And so the three materials there. So this is option one, Gina, you're just catching up.
Thank you.
The second option that we have here has a different type of stone, this is a panelized stone system, so the stone comes in about one to two inches nominal height and various lengths, but it is panelized or somewhat tiled in its use, and so it has a different scale. The longest stone is more 12 to 18 inches and goes down to six inches, but the height of the stone is set at about one to two inches in height. And it is a contrast to the red here, so here we're looking at bringing in a cool kind of gray color, and then contrasting that by bringing in the red tone in the EFS, so accenting that with red, as well as a neutral tone. So it has a little bit more of a darker feel and potentially slightly more modern in its approach. And within option two, we thought about accenting the gray stone with either a warm red color, like brick, the brick tone that you see here, or in a kind of a blue-green color. So those are two variations within the stone option of either red or accenting it with a greenish tone. And the third option that we're looking at is similar to the previous one in gray, but again, to try to find something that was in, has a more warmer feel, doesn't quite have as much red as the first one, but does have slight red undertones mixed with grays and cream colors. And again, accenting that with a light EFS color in the two-story volume, and in this one, a lighter greenish color for the accent, or additionally, just picking up more of the brown tones. And so again, there's two different accent EFS that we're using here. This is again, similar to the first one, the stone comes in about one to two inches in height and ranges anywhere from six to 18 inches in length. The option two and option three stone are not locally sourced, but great options nonetheless. So, just to point out. They're manufactured in the Midwest, I believe, so, and then sent over here. So they're a synthetic kind of stone, they're not a real natural quarried stone, so. Have a little bit more of a residential feel in their scale, as opposed to option one, because it comes in a variety of heights of two, four, six inches, and everywhere up to 24 inches, you can get a slightly larger scale in that, in those, in that stone. The option two and three are kind of a smaller scale stone. And so those are the three different options that we have shared with you this evening, and would love to get feedback on preferences or what we're liking and not liking about the various options.
Questions, comments? Councilwoman. Did you have, did you want to start off?
I need a little more thinking time, but compared to the three different types, are they in the same price area?
Yes, all of the stones presented are within the cost per square foot that we have allocated in the current cost model.
Okay, and just to make sure I've caught this, the first option, the one that has the golden, golden red stone, is fairly local, so it's got a shorter shipping distance?
Yes, it's within-
Slightly greener that way?
Yes, what's defined as local in green standards is within 500 miles, and so it's just within 500 miles of the site.
So that helps us get points if we were going-
If we were to go for lead, that, they consider anything within 500 miles a local material, and so that, this, the stone would contribute to that in option, the stone presented in option one. Option two and three do not provide that benefit. How would this, how would the lengths that are pre- dictation over, just comes out in various lengths, so anywhere from six to 18 inches?
We'd lean towards a richer picture. I don't know where we get red from though, in some of, so those are my thoughts as we lead into this. It's too bad, I think when you get a bigger cut of stone, I think it looks richer as well, but you're saying that that doesn't really happen with this other option, so interesting as we go along here. Anyway, preliminarily, those are my thoughts, thank you.
I prefer option one, exterior. It's a more earth toned, colorish, a little bit, and plus, the fact that it's locally sourced makes it a plus, but I think it gives it more richness, same time, gives us some warmth.
And one thing to note, as regard to the color variation with the stone, could work with the quarry to try to limit the amount of variation in color if that was desired. We've previously done that on other projects where you can-
Actually, I like the variation, because everything else is a starting looking, you know, you have big slabs of color, something that has variation in color actually adds some interest to the building. Councilwoman Schneider.
I agree with Vice Mayor Holliver about the white part, and I'm looking at the other colors, and the red would be too red, obviously, from the other options with that one, and wondering if, the version that we're seeing, because I like the red stone, I like that it's natural, I like that it's local, and it'll give us those points even if we don't go for the full lead certification. But what if we, so that the darker, the EFS one that's kind of a gray, flipped over, I kind of like the blue-green, but I see how well that works with the dark gray stone. So I was looking at the other one, just wondering if there was something else, a little bit darker, oh, yes, yeah, something, but with the natural stone.
Yeah, I think there's opportunities to play with the EFS colors, because that is basically any paint in the world, so there's lots of options out there, so if everyone-
So if we didn't decide that tonight, you could still go forward with the process, as long as you know which stone we're choosing?
Yes, if we could, if we have a direction or narrow down of a stone, we could come back with two different variations of different EFS colors and accents of that as well, at the meeting that we're scheduled in, I believe, June.
Question then, since I appear to be in the minority here, I'd like to see what the option one stone is if it were less colorful and larger, about as large as you can get, to see what presentation that would make on the building.
Yeah.
I think that would be very curious as we move forward here.
Yeah, we can definitely have samples brought in at the two, four, and six inch heights, and the largest piece is 24 inches long, so.
And could we see a rendering of that?
With the various heights, as well.
Yes.
This is rendering the small two inch height, but again-
I'd like to see the biggest you-
Biggest we can do.
I think I would agree with that, I'd like to see a larger.
I think it would, if the desire is to simulate or work with brick, brick is generally more in a four or six inch height, so that might help tie these two, these facilities together, the campus. And then we can bring the range of colors and talk about if there's, if there's a limitation of that, or if we want to embrace the variety of colors, or try to define it slightly more.
If we're headed down that path, I would like to see a smoother transition then in whatever the EFSs are.
Okay.
They seem pretty stark, and it's more of a community building, I think flow somewhat in the color spectrum and not just, isn't it better to your color as far as greenhouse that? We tend to, I don't know what they prefer, maybe Ms. Schneider knows, but-
It's another form of asphalt, but it's red.
Okay.
And you see it everywhere, from Alice Springs all the way out to the coast.
Planting to help soften the entrance, we of course want to make sure we have the appropriate wind protection for those entering into the facility, parking for bicycles, as well as making sure we have a good connect, be inserted into the ground and then covered when not used, and so we might want to install something to help support stations that are a little bit more sturdy than I think ease of issues with tipping and wind, and if, how again, you are hanging or placing the artwork, whether it's 2D or 3D.
Great, thank you. Don't have a lot of maintenance and don't get hot.
I think if there are- So, yeah, I was trying to figure out where, where we have the stage on the inside, a platform within the community room, there's opportunities to bring in a portable stage. We were to treat the terrace as a stage. Size of the basin, the bio swell, stormwater basin, is dictated by the amount of water that's coming off of the roof, so we can't just reduce it to any length or size that we would need, but we could relocate it or help move that into a different area.
Or build.
We'd have to come back and try to figure out, if we're not treating it here, where are we going to treat that water?
Maybe, or the other option is, is there a kind of area that provides kind of a, neither, you know, slope into or a flat area where you can put seating?
Or you're, do you think on the east side, so going down towards Palm Avenue, so the opposite side of where the room is?
Right.
Bring the hill up a little bit there, just grade it up a little bit?
Yeah.
Well, the park master plan does have sort of an informal amphitheater along that slope.
Opposite side.
Further down.
Yeah, but I mean, it's better when you can have indoor, that way you, you know, you have costumes and equipment and stuff like that, you can still be covered a bit and store your equipment, having to haul it outside, you know, it's just, I mean, this is, if you go to San Mateos Rec Center, they can open up the stage, open up both sides, and then they can have outdoor theater, so it doubles. The one in Central Park, Washington, you know, next to the baseball diamond?
Yeah.
The recreation center, yeah, go there and you'll see that, that they open up the rec center back of the stage and they open it up, and then they put seating outside, so it can double as, so I'm not saying put a stage there, but it can, it can automatically be a stage once you open it up, so you can double use out of that, out of that space.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to go back, the basin doesn't extend all the way, we do have an existing tree that we're avoiding here, and so maybe there's opportunities more the northern edge to accomplish something like that. But to note, the, recall that the playground is just adjacent to that, so there would be limited lengths of where we could provide seating before we then hit the playground area. If I'm understanding correctly, the audience, you're saying is down here, correct?
Well, I just, I just want to use most, yeah, that, use, use double the use-
Double the use of that terrace.
Right, so rather than just being a place to congregate, people can use it as a stage for performances, and it'd be pretty nice, so, and then, or weddings or whatever, outdoor wedding, and if there was opportunity to put seating outside, yeah, so neither we build like, you keep the swell and you build a bridge over it and then you have a flat area, or you move the swell out, further out or something, to provide some space for seating.
Okay, let us look at that and see what we can come back with, as far as the outdoor performance area.
And question, Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
So your outside patio there really seems to narrow at the southern end there, a lot. Why is that, that we're doing that?
Well, we were trying to be able to secure the patio, so it wouldn't, so in the evenings, you can see a small sort of gated area or area where you could sort of close that area off, so it wouldn't be somewhere where someone would try to make a home in the evening, I guess, so to speak. So we were trying to just make sure that that patio was secure and delineated so that it was clearly working within the community room and not a space that anyone would sort of walk into unless they were coming, using it in conjunction with the community room. So it's not a terrace that's like a park amenity, but it's an amenity for the community center and recreation center, I'm sorry. And so we're just trying to delineate and define that.
Yeah, I understand the thought process, I still would like to maximize enough of number five there, as noted, so that we're not, it just becomes more utilitarian, I guess, the bigger it is there. I think we can figure out security in another way somehow there, and also, are we putting in something, we had discussed some sort of a heating element, like a fire pit or something?
Yes, there's been different things that we've been- Yes, there's been different things that we've been discussing, and I think will be something we'll bring back at the next meeting.
Okay, so my concern would be, is the current rendition is presented there. It goes off a little too narrow towards the end there.
Correct.
And this is our maximum entertainment feature. So I would hope that we can maximize that. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the Mills Dragon team out there going to perform for us for the next meeting. So can we continue this discussion to the next meeting this evening?
It's 6:53.
I know, we're getting close, so we... Well, how much more do we have?
We're getting very close to then, just a handful of slides. So I think moving on, just into looking at some of the site furnishings. So we're looking at new benches, similar in a style or material to the recreation center. Some curvilinear benches for social area gathering and those feature areas. And then more of your traditional straight bench for your general purpose areas. And then looking at bike racks, again, that are circular in form to respond to that arching and curvilinear landscape features that we have. And as far as the material of wood, we can come back and address whether that is sustainably harvested wood or whether that's simulated wood. When we look at planting, again, California native and climate appropriate planting, looking at massing of plants with structures closer to the buildings, habitat friendly with seasonal color, low maintenance, low water use, and some textured planting along Lincoln Circle and the Taylor Middle School. And then, of course, shaded parking lot with wind buffering, to provide wind buffering. When we look at the planting in the rainwater treatment areas, so again, want to make sure it's green and attractive planting. There is an opportunity potentially for art in those areas. A medium amount of maintenance and water use and bio retention at great plantings, as well as the potential for educational engagement within those areas to help demonstrate and explain what the bioswales are doing and how they're retaining and clearing the water. As we presented a variety of trees, we shared two trees. The staff had a preference for using the Chinese elm. This is the specimen tree that we were talking about at the central courtyard, just outside of the community room. And so this was the staff preferred scheme. The other one that we had shared with them is a southern live oak. And then as we look at the variety of other trees within the site, again, a variety of shapes and forms and color to help bring seasonal change to the site. So these are sampling of the trees and that we'll come back with exactly where these trees are planted later.
I can't remember where I was, but somebody was going, talking about manzanitas. And I admit to liking manzanitas because they can get very sculpture, and they've got that red bark that may complement the stone. So I don't know if you want to think about some manzanita. And I've told the city manager this, the airport has been doing a lot of building and putting in some drought tolerant landscaping. And then, when I was there at a training a month ago, there were tulips and other bulb, things that we wouldn't think of as drought tolerant, but they pop through for that splash of color. And it was really lovely. So it's kind of a little bit of the drought tolerant, but when the rain's falling, why not get some bulbs in there? And then they die back by the time we don't need to water anymore. So go on, look at their new, it's their new staff where their noise office is. But it's that, we actually saw it quite a few different places around the airport, and really stunning looking.
Great, I will share that. And then as we look at other planting, landscape planting in the area, again, just a variety of textures, colors, formal and more informal types of plantings. Again, we'll come back at the next meeting with a planting plan that illustrates where each one of these plants and trees will be. But this is just the palette that our landscape architect will be using.
Can you throw one more in there?
Yeah.
Cienothus, really great for bees, purple flowers. This has been a great year for cienothus, but again, another California native, multiple species.
Great, we'll add that to the list. And then, again, so just wrapping up, if there's no other comments, we'll be presenting to the Planning Commission, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission in June, and then coming back for our second City Council Design Session in early July, where we will share updated site and building design, as well as start reviewing some of the interior finishes and layouts of the building. So, a lot happening. Great.
Okay.
Just in time.
Great, thank you. All right, so we're going to take a quick break, and we assemble outside for a performance by the Mills Dragon Team in celebration of Asian Heritage Awareness Month. So everybody's welcome to go outside and enjoy the entertainment. And we'll reconvene soon after that. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending the May 14th meeting of the Millbury City Council. Can I have roll call, please?
Four council members are present. Councilmember Oliva is excused.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Leva sends her deepest regrets. She wanted to be here for all the ceremonies. Can I, Kelly, President of the Mill High School Student Body, to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. I just want to give a few shout outs to Mark. He did a phenomenal job this year, leading the leadership in Mills High School. Okay, let's see, we have the first order of business. We have, want to recognize the art show winners. And I also like to, also shout out to Councilwoman Schneider, who shepherded this project. This project was dormant for a long time, and Councilwoman Schneider brought it back. And it's something that we sorely really needed to show and have our residents able to express their abilities and art and their specialties and their, then their, and they're, I'm missing the words. Skill sets, well, it's more than that, just talents, yes, talents. So let's see, we have three or four art pieces here. And of course, there were many, and they were very difficult to choose. I went to the art show and it was very difficult, you know, choices to make, but the judges somehow did it. So I would like to ask Eleanor Samoza, Faith Lee, Emmy Lee Wan, and Gwyneth Zhang up to the podium, please. Hey, Faith, congratulations. Thank you. Now I know what you're doing in your spare time. Emmy Lee, is this you? Is this you? No, that's not you. Okay, who's Emmy Lee? It's not you.
Emmy Lee is not here tonight.
How to listen, Eleanor. That must be you.
That's me. I don't even want to take. Can we take a picture with you, would you mind?
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more.
One, two, three.
We're keeping you up for the rest of council, or are you going to take it home?
Those are individual things.
Okay.
We did, actually, we should have someone photographing one or two.
So we had, do we have commendations for them, or? Yeah, they're here, all right. Okay, so can I have Brian Chan, Mark Schaaffholder, Isaac Leon, is that right? Schaaffholder, sorry. The Beast, right? Beast and Beauty and the Beast, awesome. Cyrus Leon, up to the podium for me, thanks. Come on up, come on up. All right, so as I mentioned outside, the Mills Dragon Team and Mr. Phillips. Could you come up here too, Mr. Phillips? Yes, Mr. Phillips is very modest. He likes to celebrate the students, which is awesome. But I think just, I think we also like to acknowledge Mr. Phillips for helping make this possible. So, that dragon head, understand, is every year refurbished or redone, so the kids do that themselves. They didn't buy it off the shelf, so if you wanted that dragon head, I would take it. Okay, so we have proclamation for National Public Works. Key Lin is the Director of Public Works and also our Deputy City Manager, and Key is going to represent all the hard-working men and women who ensures that our sewers are not, and that our water is running, and you get, so you can flush your toilet and have water for food and substance, and also make sure that our roads are paved and ensure that the water flows and storm drains are unclogged, and traffic signals, and a lot of things that we take for granted every day is not glorious, it's not sexy, but it makes the city, it makes the city very vibrant, and it makes our city special because all little things, including making sure, cleaning downtown and street sweeping, and making it very friendly to visitors and residents, is all due to the hard work of Public Works. And I especially appreciated it because when I was last time mayor, there were eight water main breaks, and they worked tirelessly for two days to fix all those water mains so that people can get water in their houses. And I just want to thank you and recognize you for your and your crew, and of course, I know you're very proud of them. Would you like to say a few words for them?
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and Vice Mayor Halliburton, and members of the Milbury City Council. Key Lin, Public Works Director, I'd like to say thank you very much, and I, on behalf of all 57 members strongs of Public Works Department, thank you, thank you very much. And we also have something that we'd like to present to the City Council tonight. Every year, the American Public Works Association publishes a poster for National Public Works Week, and this year, the theme is "It Starts Here." So, we'd like you to have this poster. And on top of that, we are going to be doing a city picnic next week on Tuesday, and the flyers are here, and it's going to start at 11:30 at the treatment plant. And after the barbecue, the picnic, we're going to be conducting a little tour of the treatment plant facilities, and any of you, I would love for you guys to come join us, and I will pass the flyer to Eling. And also, lastly, we have some really beautiful gifts away for our council members. We have reusable water bottles, and again, I'll pass that out to Eling. Thank you, Eling.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And we really want to thank you for the current work on the crosswalks and all of that. It's been, we've gotten a lot of comments from the public about how nice they look now, and hopefully, we'll keep our residents safer than ever before, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the tour of the sewage treatment plant, is that just for council members or open to the public?
We have also invited the Rotary Club, and I just want to let you guys know that we are now officially proud members of the Rotary Club. A few of us, City Manager Tom Williams, Deanna, and myself. And then, we are opening the picnic and the tour to also the Rotary members.
What are you coming up to? Okay, so this is, May is the Asian-American Pacific Island Heritage Month, and it was started in June 1977 by Jimmy Carter, and it started off as Heritage Week, but President Obama has declared it as a month of celebration and awareness, and a lot of Asians contribute to the American life, and I like to say that I was born on an Army base, so I'm Army-issued, Asian-American, and people ask me where I'm from, I always say, "I'm from America." So, I don't, I think that the reason why, and hopefully, in the future, I think it's good to celebrate different cultures because it brings some color into our lives, and I'm hoping that in the future that we may not have to have these type of awareness, but all just for the fact to celebrate our heritage. And these people here, who are up here, helped us do this just recently at the Chinese Lunar New Year Festival. They organized this event in three months, which was usually done in eight months, so I just want to thank you, Alice Kwan, Warren Young, John Chang, and Niwa Chang, right? Thank you very much. So, I just also just came from Utah, went to Promontory Summit, where they celebrated the 150th spike of the Transcontinental Railroad, and for 150 years, the Chinese would never ever acknowledge as working on that railroad. 12,000 people worked on it, 1,200 of them died building that railroad. They built the hardest, the most difficult part, which was going through the Sierra. They were dynamited, dynamiting, or not dynamiting, they were using black powder to break up the granite rocks to build tunnels through the Sierra, and they were excluded from the final photo of the Golden Spike, and I just wanted to go, I went there this, yes, on Friday to make up for that, so a lot of us went there to make up for that photo. And Elaine Chow, the Secretary of Transportation, was there to make that point, and it wasn't just the Asians who were involved, there was the Mormons and American Indians, ex-Confederan, ex-Union workers, and notably, and it's still a record, Chinese built 10 miles of track all in 12 hours, and that's still a rolls record. So, I think that Asians also endured quite a bit of challenges, including being excluded because I can't, you know, they were excluded from having homes, they were excluded from having jobs, they were excluded from coming into the United States for the longest time, and fortunately, it started off in California, in fact, but I think we changed that. And I'm hoping that, you know, it's easy because Asians are easily different in looks than another population in America, and even today, they're still being treated as different. But I think we Americans, Chinese-American, Asian-Americans, Japanese-American, Korean-Americans, we contribute, and we like to not just be recognized, but also, we just want to show that we are Americans, and we love our country just as much as anybody else, and that if you want to know more about that, the 442nd is celebrating their anniversary, and they were the most decorated WWII unit made up of Japanese-American, whose families were interned, but they fought for America, and they were the most awarded and decorated unit in the United States' history. And they're dwindling down their population, but they did it with, even though that their family were interned in camps. And I don't say that the Japanese were the only, but they were, for most part, the largest race and easily the most identifiable. So, I'm hoping that we don't repeat history, and I'm hoping that everybody stands up when we see injustice, when we see people who are, particularly like the Muslims are now today, are being targeted, and I'm hoping that we, as a country, stand up for everybody's rights, whether you be whatever color, creed, or religion that you belong to, that we all know that we all bleed the same color. And also, I'd like to announce that the Asians in this, not just Asians, but the Asian Caucus in... So, can we, are we up to the agenda now? All right, let's start.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. Just a quick briefing of what's going on in the city of Milbury. Every third Friday of the month, it's Milbury Goes to the Movies, and so this Friday night, May 17th, it will be showing Incredibles 2 at Central Park. And again, there's games, snacks, free screening of Incredibles 2. The movie takes place outdoors again in Central Park, and festivities begin at 6:00 PM with the movie starting at sundown. So, we hope to see everybody there. We do know that there's rain cast all week, starting tonight, except for Friday, so we still plan on having the movies. If it's too wet, then we will provide notice on Friday morning, but we're still planning on having the movies outdoors, so we hope to see everybody there. Also, a few Saturdays ago, April 27th, the Milbury community celebrated Arbor Day and Earth Day. We'd like to thank everyone that showed up. We had about 160 volunteers that planted 20 oak trees along the spur trail. We picked up more than 700 pounds of litter and recyclable materials around the city, so we accomplished very much, and we thank everyone that turned out to volunteer to help beautify the city. Also, last Saturday, May 11th, we had an incredible bike rodeo that was led by our Sheriff's Department and especially Chief Cunkel, that led in partnership with the CHP, the Milbury School District, the Lions Club, all departments. I just, I can't thank them enough, just a great job that they're doing over the last several months. So, thank you to all the staff.
Also, I want to thank the staff for conducting the youth summit, Stability Youth Summit in the last few days. Shelley Ryder is, with the help of Mackenzie Brady, helped put that together quickly, and with the guidance of Councilwoman Schneider, to try to win some grants that the county is offering, and the youth got together to brainstorm ideas with the help of staff, and staff's going, it's been phenomenal in that respect. So, thank you for the Public Works Department and the Recreation Department. And also, again, thanks to the Sheriff's Department, they really stepped up in the bike rodeo and made it a phenomenal community event. Maybe the other cities will start to, will emulate, want to emulate that program, and also, kudos to Councilwoman Schneider for pushing for the bike rodeo and heading that up, I liked it, so thank you very much, Councilwoman Schneider.
Just because you mentioned it, we had visitors from both South City and San Bruno taking notes, so hopefully, we can give them our helpful hints and we pass it forward or pay it forward.
Councilwoman Patten.
And I guess we thank to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, who provided the bike, what do you want to call it, bike station, where you could get your bike evaluated and...
Actually repaired and tuned up and...
Yeah.
Tube replacement, that was fantastic.
Yeah, we didn't know they sponsored that, but those individuals go around and you can get your bike fixed up a bit, so thank you.
That's not a cheap service, too, because I wish I was around, because that's about $75.
Is it about $75?
Yeah, that's not cheap.
Again, nice job, and thank you, Ms. Schneider, for leading the way on that one. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, moving towards the agenda, a quick overview. Item number two is the Agenda overview. Under that item, we have a calendar of events for information, reports of bills and claims for information. Item number three is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of April 9th and April 23rd. There are no oral reports from any city committee or commission chairs this evening. That, we have public communication, and that's for anybody of the public that would like to address the City Council, speaking for three minutes on items not on the agenda. After that, we move to the Consent Calendar. Item number five is a resolution awarding a construction contract to EPS, Doing Business as Express Plumbing, for the sewer modernization program at Cappuccino High School, in the vicinity of Cappuccino High School. That's a sewer upgrade project. Item number six is a resolution accepting replacement of the existing carpet here at the city of Milbury as complete, and filing a notice of completion. Item number seven is a resolution awarding construction, a construction contract to G. Bordolato and Company for the 2019 pavement maintenance program, and just real quick on that, that will be done in time for the Lions Car Show, I verified that. Item number eight is adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager designated to execute the first addendum to the Agreement for Professional Services with GHD for on-call engineering services, and extend their contract for one year, and increase the compensation by an aggregate amount not to exceed $300,000 for fiscal year 2018-19 and fiscal year 19 and 20. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the City Manager designated to execute the first addendum to the Agreement for Professional Services with Bellician Associates. This is the Shore Highway and Rollins Road pavement repair project. We also will need to increase the budget to a total amount not to exceed $38,960. That is from an original contract of $118,392 to $150,352. There was some infrastructure that was found underneath the pavement that no one knew about, so that increased the cost. Item number 10 is a considered adoption of a resolution approving the mayor's attendance to the 87th Annual Meeting of the United States Conference of Mayors on June 28th through July 1st. At the request of staff and the mayor, that item will be continued, so we're removing it from the agenda this evening, and perhaps continuing that to the June 11th meeting. So, that will not be heard tonight. Moving into public hearings, item number 11, this is a continuation of the Gateway Milbury Station area design, their review permit, so we still have some work to do with the applicant on the color for the hotel. Also, we'd like to bring back at the same time the monument sign on Milbury Avenue and the landscaping of the meeting, and so we still have work to do, so at the request of the applicant, we would like to get that item to June 11th as well. Item number existing business is the Recreation Center Restoration Project to, one, receive the informational update on the final Recreation Center first phase of the project and accept the final report. Under new business, item 13 is to review and affirm the city's position regarding opposition to Senate Bill 50. This is the Senator Wiener's bill on allowing multifamily housing units by right under state law and usurping local control. After item 13 is council comments, and then adjourning the meeting in memory of several people that we will make comment on. So, with that, that's the overview of the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. Any questions?
On the continuation of item 11, will we be able to see particularly the signage beforehand, or, you know, as soon as possible on that front? It's concerning to many of us.
Yes, council member, we'll have that information in the City Council prior to the meeting.
Anything else? Okay, so on item 10, the mayor's conference thing...
So we still have some work to do with the applicant on the color for the hotel. Also, we'd like to bring back at the same time the monument sign on Millbury Avenue and the landscaping of the median. So we still have work to do. So at the request of the applicant, we would like to get that item to June 11th as well. Item number existing business is the Recreation Center Restoration Project to, one, receive the informational update on the final Recreation Center first phase of the project and accept the final report. Under new business, item 13 is to review and affirm the city's position regarding opposition to Senate Bill 50. This is the Senator Weiner's bill on allowing multifamily housing units by right under state law and usurping local control. After item 13 is council comments and then adjourning the meeting in memory of several people that we will make comment of. So with that, that's the overview of the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Thank you. Any questions?
On the continuation of item 11, will we be able to see particularly the signage beforehand or, you know, as soon as possible on that front? It's concerning to many of us.
Yes, council member, we'll have that information in the City Council prior to the meeting.
Anything else? Okay, so on item 10, the mayor's conference thing, just for those people who are wondering why we pulled it, it's pretty obvious that the cost is eye-popping, but I wanted to make sure that the council heard it because this is not just about this one conference. This is about the fact that do we want to participate in future mayor conferences? And the price tag is -- there are some things we can do to reduce that, but I think that we want to talk about the value of participating in this. And the reason why is because we had a presentation by Congresswoman Sphera Staff about the fact that a lot of cities did not know that there were federal grants that the cities could take advantage of and those were normally discussed at these type of conferences. So -- and other cities and the county have recognized that and are sending their mayors. So that's something we want to talk about.
And along those lines, too, the annual meeting of the United States Conference of Mayors is exceptionally important. I think part of the cost issue, too, is here, we're not a member. So if we could address that in the future, the cost is reduced if we become a member of this organization. And I know how important these meetings have been in the past for many, many different cities. So when we look at and evaluate that, I'd appreciate finding out what it costs to -- for our city to join this conference so that any future expenditures are reduced there.
Yeah, well, this conference is never going to be cheap because it's always said a Class A city and hotel bills are always high. So it's never going to be cheap, but the question is if it's worth the value to the citizens of Millbury. So, okay, so let's move on to the minutes. And I knew there was a change that the Vice Mayor has pointed out. And with those changes, what day was that again?
That was for April 23rd. It was -- there was a reference to the mayor of Malta and I believe it or of Mosta.
Right. There's a president of Malta.
Page the Chinese-speaking merchants and aussy dick.
That letter is from Sammy Yim because he is busy in San Jose and give some scholarship. But because he is Commissioner of Sitters Tea Commission, so he was very strong support and tried to have one unit easy in Chinese spelling name. So that's what he wrote, but he's not able to present today. Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, and I was on behalf of Sammy Yim, Commissioner of City, speak on behalf of him. So thank you very much.
More thing?
Working, continuing to work very hard, as always, on the funding ops for the Recreation Center. So we've summarized for funding in hand as well as commitments, so funds...
Hoping maybe it was, wow, you didn't have enough natural resources. I'm still going to say when we move or when we're -- when I'm being asked to approve the full packet, where you look at the bioswale that we talked about in the study session and we're going to be grading the ground, it's an opportunity to think about, and I'm forgetting the right word, the underground tanks that store storm water so we don't have sewage overflows or storm water overflows into the bay. It's an opportunity to put a tank under there as a containment basin. I know it would cost more, but perhaps there's some green infrastructure funding we can get for that aspect of the project. And I just don't want to lose sight of it because my understanding is our heaviest overflow on bad rain days is coming down Tioga and it's not that difficult to shift that water. Well, okay, it's a little difficult. Okay, it's a lot difficult to bring it from Tioga or down the hillside interview and get that water down so that it doesn't end up in our neighborhoods that would flood. So I just want to keep that idea out there. That's not going to stop me from voting and approving what you're asking tonight. And then my third question, you said we've got two RF requests for interest or some...
So we put forward a request for statement of interest. We had two responses to that request.
So I know that Supervisor Carol Groom has talked about funding to help grow more preschools. So hopefully, we've tapped into that grant.
Funding would not be needed until mid to late 2021. I would imagine that we would need to have that agreement finalized well before that, before move on.
5330 is even worse.
Talked about those derels that have the safe point and the evacuation chairs. And also during normal day-to-day, of course, an elevator and if for some reason elevator is out of service, which is not common, your concern is valid. But I think there's ways that we can train people up. And they made me feel like I could get...
And so, and I see that there are questions of the council, so in brief summary, I'd be happy to answer questions and provide our staff opinion.
Councilwoman Papen.
This has been quite a topic of discussion. Cities throughout San Mateo County have opposed this strongly, so the legislation does not consider intermodal centers such as Millbury's transit programs or plans that various city community have had. Mr. Brown, this is really a time for all communities together.
South San Francisco and San Bruno both approached and estimated 19 times of return. So 100% return. So that's awesome. And self-help for release, having their celebration, the gala on June 14th at the Hyatt. And self-help for the elderly, they pretty much provide meals three times a day at the security room at 12 o'clock Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Three days a week. And it's free. It's -- well, there's a $3 suggested donation. There is entertainment -- well, there's activities. So seniors can also socialize and have activities and also get a nutritious meal. I will not be here on a meeting on the 28th. I'm going to China on my own dime to try to create some trade opportunities and goodwill. So I still went to Malta on my own dime. So it's a very expensive year for the mayor. And there is a trip planned to Hanyu, Japan, November-ish, 8th, 9th, or something like that. And that's going to be on my own dime. So I think people just -- I think maybe I get my point across. Anyway, then on the 30th, the Council of Cities, a meeting of all the council members and mayors of San Mateo County, Millbury's hosting and that's -- oh, 31st, sorry, 31st, last Friday in the month. And the airport director will be speaking and I think it'd be -- unfortunately, I won't be there, so the Vice Mayor, you're going to have to -- I'm just keeping the Vice Mayor busy. Well, you know, what's the point of having a Vice Mayor if you're not doing Vice Mayor stuff? So anyway, and then finally, as I mentioned before, the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus has formed and their membership's $50. Their first event will be Angelica's in Redwood City on the 23rd at 6:30. So all are welcome and hopefully people will come and see what's going on and participate. And we're going to close tonight's meeting under Zelda Rattenberg.
Rattenberg.
Rattenberg, Senator Ellen Tesher, and longtime volunteer and senior committee advisory member Mary Summers.
Oh, I hadn't heard.
Yeah, she's -- yeah, she's been sick for a little bit. And then also grandson of Takeo Lewis and mother -- I mean, son of Marcia Perez was gunned down unexpectedly, you know, in the wrong place, in the wrong time, wrong place at a very young age, Donello A. Kaka. So we just like to -- we're sorry. And but we do have, we're celebrating the 100th birthday of, what was it, Ms. Ava? AB? Masu AB is a Millbury resident. So something good to say. All right, so I'm going to close the meeting. Thank you very much.